Did he go to North Pole with Santa?
Meeting call to order.
Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted, we state, the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen.
Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Flag the ladies to the flag, the United States of America, into the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Nune. Eleven present.
Any memorials, Counselor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for a very special person that I inadvertently omitted some time ago, Gennario El Liel. He was the husband of Fernando de Souza Liel, with whom he shared the last 52 years of marriage. He was born in São Brazos, Tassera, Azores, Portugal. He was raised in Tassera, where he attended the area schools. While in Tassera, he operated his father's convenience store for several years. In 1970, Gennario relocated to the United States with his wife Fernanda, settling in Lowell's back Central Street neighborhood. He was a communicant of St. Anthony's Church. He was also a member of the Portuguese-American Civic League, the Reds Club, the Portuguese-American Center, the Blues Club, and the Holy Ghost Society. After immigrating to Lowell, he worked at Parishew as a machine operator until 1978. He later began working for Bradford Industries, formerly known as Pendel, as an inspector until his retirement. Gennario was a jokester at heart. He loved being a videographer and maintained the Gennario Liel YouTube channel, which is referred to as Liel Videos. He enjoyed recording events happening in the Portuguese community, especially the processions and festivals. He was well-known in the Portuguese carnival community after participating for several years. In addition to his wife Fernanda, he is survived by his four children, Roberta, Elisa Beat, Davido, Roberto, his 13 grandchildren, and his great-granddaughter, Lial Liel. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
And another moment of silence. Here and now, Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. As we proceed to the meeting, I'd like to introduce Madam Mayor of the day, Ms. Sophia Marabon. She'll be joining us for the first few minutes of the meeting. We'll start with the mayor's business, and 2.1 is communication, remote Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Motion is passed. We now go to section 2.2. One of my favorite things is to hear all the presentation of the events going on. So this presentation is on the Points of Light Festival. I'd like to welcome Chris Hayes and Laura Taveras. Please come to the podium.
We did have a presentation to plug in. Do we know how to do that?
Please. Is the microphone working or?
Yeah, we were just trying to get the presentation up.
Okay, I see.
Well, I guess we don't get a presentation.
Okay. Just kidding. The file's not working. Sorry about that. My name's Laura Taveras. I live at 72 Richardson Street.
Chris Hayes, 100 Mass Mills Drive.
So, Mr. Mayor, counselors, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and a special thanks to Counselor Yem for suggesting that we present to the council about the sixth annual Points of Light Festival that is scheduled currently for April 29th, 2023, at Ecumenical Plaza in the acre. So what started as a DIY Lowell idea has grown into an annual event that celebrates the unity and diversity in Lowell by using light and water, common elements in a variety of cultural festivals across the world. It's also an opportunity to showcase partnerships across the city, the activation of Lowell's canals, and serves as a direct and indirect economic impact for Lowell and the acre. The centerpiece of the event, if you've ever been, is the launching of personalized lanterns into the Western Canal. We actually, hold on. Presentation's getting started. There we go. We've got the presentation up. So, the centerpiece of the event's the launching of personalized lanterns into the Western Canal. In the weeks leading up to the festival, lantern decorating takes place across the city at schools, community organizations, and businesses. And of course, individuals can personalize lantern at the festival itself. But the festival offers a whole lot more: a diverse range of food from nonprofit vendors and restaurants, performances from community organizations, cultural organizations, and individuals that range from dance to spoken word, drama, music, and more. Speaking program that features welcomes from elected officials, multi-faith prayers and blessings, and we've even had a history presentation on the plaza itself. Towards the evening, we feature musical performances from a variety of cultural genres such as Irish, Latin, and even Greek music, and of course, the memorable lantern launch. It is worth noting that all of the lanterns are retrieved from the canal at the end of the event.
So I get the pleasure of explaining, well, why are we standing here, talking, taking up your time, which we really do appreciate. And first of all, that's because we really do want to give thanks to the city. We would not survive without, first of all, the work of the Cultural Affairs and Special Events Office, who really helps guide us through these events and also administers the Lowell Cultural Council, who's also been invaluable in giving grants and support to us over the years. And we also received ARPA support in 2021 to offset some of the costs of reopening the festival after two years of not being able to gather. And we realized how important it was for everybody to be able to come together during that time in a way that we didn't even really understand before. We also want to thank the city for the use of the plaza and maintaining the plaza, and the use of tables tents, things like that, that the city has provided to us for free, and the marketing through, like Lowell, that we've gotten for free. And of course, we want to thank all the departments, like, not just CASE, but DPW and the Parks Department, DPD, the Lowell Police Department, the Lowell Fire Department, all play a part in making sure festivals like ours run without a hitch. We also wanted to take a moment to explain kind of who we are and thank the funding partners, which include the Lowell Housing Authority, the Central Rivers Power, who owns the canal, and the power of equipment, Lowell National Historical Park, BRM Productions, who might be most famous for the Lowell Kinetic Sculpture Race around here, Coalition for a Better Acre, who are our fiscal agent, the Lowell Waterways Vitality Initiative, and DIY Lowell. We also are not going to list the dozens of private sponsors that donate money to our festival, but believe me, there's a big picture of them. I guess it's not on the screen anymore, but it is there. And the other reason why we're talking to you is because we need help. We need help from everybody, and really in three ways, one of which is to help promote partnerships for fundraising. We really want to talk to other festivals or other groups, cultural and economic organizations, to increase the sponsorship reach. The way Lowell thrives is through its gatherings, its culture, and its festivals. And the more private support we can have, the more that we can develop economically and touch so many other lives. So that's one of the things we want to put forth, a request for support in reaching those groups to partner. The second is, our festival is supposed to reflect all of Lowell, and we want a community advisory committee that reflects all of Lowell. So we're recruiting for a diverse group to meet a couple of times, just a couple times, a couple meetings, to advise and guide the festival. And again, we need help reaching those people, recruiting that committee, young, old, different races and ethnicities, different neighborhoods of Lowell, coming together to help guide us. And then finally, we also need volunteers. We need volunteers for a working group that help us do the hundred different things. This thing is all volunteer-run, so the more volunteers we can get to help us do lantern sessions, logistics, arts, planning, connections with the community, the better. And then finally, we did want to ask, you know, the council if they have anything that they, any feedback you want to give us in terms of what you want to see, what we could be doing differently. That's really it. That's all our asks. So, you know, just a few little things. But also just want to share the word about the festival, because it, again, it really was incredible how many people came out. It was our biggest year ever that year after COVID, and how important it was.
Thank you. Any comments? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to thank the committee of the Lantern Festival, the Point of Lights. I attended last year. There was a lot of children, families, that come from the neighborhood. And I'm amazed how many volunteers and organizations that came together and to make this a successful. The lantern in many cultures, especially in the Asian culture, representing a, you know, lights, a celebration of light, celebration of life. So we use the lantern, we float the lantern down the river. So this is really an incredible event that I encourage the city to get involved, and residents who are watching at home to also get involved. You can come in with your family, and you decorate the lantern to whoever, your family, who, your parents who passed away, and you put their names and all that, and that lantern will float down the canal. It's a really excellent event, family event. Thank you. Thank you, the committee, and thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Motion is passed. Thank you both for being here to make the presentation.
Thank you.
We now go to 2.3, the citations part. The first one is for Veterans of the Month. If you would ask Mr. Peaceley if you could approach the podium, please. And as you know, we, as a body, we support and remember all the veterans every day, but once in a while, if you can do this, to highlight one particular veteran, symbolic of us supporting all the veterans in our city, in our state, and across the country. And it's my honor to present a citation to you today, Ms. Mr. Peaceley. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Michael L. Peaceley, Veteran of the Month. USAF Lieutenant Colonel Michael L. Peaceley is a lifelong resident of Lowell. He attended Central Catholic High School and graduated from the University of Lowell, where he received an ROTC scholarship and was commissioned as an Air Force Second Lieutenant through its Air Force ROTC program. Michael completed 26 years of combined reserve and active duty. He served on flight crews of B-52 bombers as a combat systems officer, CSO, responsible for the aircraft navigation, weapons, and electronic warfare. He participated in many training and readiness exercises and for combat deployment to Diego, Garcia, Qatar, Iraq, and Afghanistan, where he flew more than 160 combat hours in support of US and Allied operations. His service and deployment earned many awards and decoration, including the Defense Meritorious Medal, two awards of the Air Medal, the Aerial Achievement Medal, Joint Service, and Air Force Commendations Medals, and numerous campaigns and service ribbons. In civilian life, he continues to use his aviation skills to serve his community as an air ambulance pilot and first responder on vital and sometimes lifesaving medical flights. Supporting and advocating for his brother and sister veterans has always been a priority. He is a PAG member and president of the local chapter of the Nam Knights Motorcycle Club, a group devoted to helping other veterans in need. He is a life member of VFW Post 662 in Lowell and serves as the Senior Vice Commander at the Draken American Legion Post 315. He has also served on the Lowell Veterans Commission, the Greater Lowell Veterans Council, and is currently a trustee on the Board of the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. His record of service to his country, community, and brother and sister veterans combine to make him an outstanding and deserving recipient of the Veteran of the Month Award. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, please offer our respect, gratitude, and best wishes to Michael L. Peaceley for his selfless community service and highly distinguished service to Lowell, Massachusetts, and our country, given this 13-day of 2022, signed by myself and the entire city council. Any comments from the counselors, from any members? Here and now, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yem?
I just want to say thank you, sir, for your service. And as the Chair of the Veterans Affairs of the City, I would like to have an opportunity to work together to enhance and to support our veterans, you know, and maybe put together the parade back again that the city of Lowell once had. So I really appreciate your service, and thank you again, sir.
Thank you. Kodo, would you like, Counselor Rourke?
Thank you. I always recognize outstanding career that Mr. Peaceley had, and to thank whoever nominated him. This is, you know, we hear these a lot, and we're very thankful for all our veterans, but to hear your accomplishments and your service to the country tonight, I'm going to really wish you to just sit back and think and what all our service, but I want to have done. And I just thank you for your service, sir.
Lieutenant Colonel, would you like, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a very impressive citation that the mayor, you know, informed us about. When we think about heroes, the kids think about a movie star or a basketball player or a football player, and yet, we don't know. But there's people in our midst, in our neighborhood, that we don't hear anything about, but then they come before us, such as yourself, and you are the real hero. So my hat goes off to you. I'm very honored to have, to meet you. I'm very honored to have, to meet you, and I'm very proud and grateful for your service because without our fine veterans, both men and women, who have gone off to preserve our rights and freedom, our ability to gather here without repercussion, to be able to have a free country whereby we can criticize our government without getting shot, all these rights, veterans preserve that right for us. So I'm very, very honored and grateful for everything that you have done. You deserve this honor just by hearing what our mayor has read, and I congratulate you. Thank you so much.
Lieutenant Colonel, if you'd like to say a few words?
Certainly.
Would you like to say a few?
Did I have any, just thank you. I'm honored to be, when you're recognized by your peers and by your city, I look around the room, a lot of Sunville kids here, we all grew up in Lowell. We've come a long way from Gage Park, I'll tell you that much. I just thank you all for that recognition and, and Reader, thank you for those kind words, but I'm not, I'm not the hero. But we continue to serve, we served and then we continue to serve afterwards, and that's, that's all that motivates me. So thank you.
Well, I'll present a citation to you now. the corridor and the city hall, hallways, you know, I had the wide shot because she might be taken over at the meeting for the rest of the night. So she's done a great job. The way this came about, Sophia is the Mayor of the Day. There was a fundraiser last year by WCAP for Salvation Army, and there was an auction that won by Mr. Jerry Nada of WCAP to have a high school student be Mayor of the Day. And Sophia, she competed, went through the process, video contests and things like that, and she was selected by her peers to be the mayor. And such a great, she did such a great job with the contest. We provided the video to LTCs. I'm going to ask LTC to play that video real quick. It's a one-minute video which Sophia submitted to win the Mayor of the Day. If you could show that video, please.
Hi, my name is Sophia Maribault, and I'm an upcoming senior at Lowell High School. I believe one of the pressing issues facing our city and community is homelessness, and the number of individuals experiencing homelessness has more than doubled since 1990 and continues to rise. The pandemic is only worse in these conditions, and seeing as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention momentarily infusions is no longer in effect as of last year, not much stands in the way of these numbers increasing. I think that Lowell could benefit by drawing from example, like other states such as Colorado, Georgia, and Oregon have overall best homeless assistance, all of which commonly derives from access to housing, transitional housing, safe havens, rapid rehousing, and other permanent housing and permanent supportive housing. So to combat chronic homelessness, I think Lowell requires a more coordinated approach. This would mean greater collaboration amongst housing providers and wider community engagement, similar to how the
I think you're in luck. I think you might be able to hear from, from the Madam Mayor herself instead. Before she speak, I do want to read the citation to her first. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Sophia Maribault, Mayor of the Day. Sophia is a senior at Lowell High School and Chair of the Lowell Student Advisory Council, a district-wide group leading positive change in partnership with the Lowell Public Schools Administration. Sophia is also involved in several extracurricular activities, including softball, the Lowell High School Student Newspaper, and a host of other activities. Now therefore, your Assistant Mayor today, and the entire City Council extend our sincerest congratulations and best wishes for good health and happiness to Sophia Maribault. Signed by myself and the entire City Council. Just one last thing, Sophia's a great student, and she's heading to one of the great universities next year. So without further ado, I'm gonna have you say a few things, Madam Mayor.
I want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and especially the people who elected me. This was really eye-opening, and I'm so glad that I came, especially on a day where I got to meet so many new faces and shake hands with so many great people. As for the rest of my video, it was probably going to end soon. I was just explaining the emphasis on coordination between homeless shelters. I actually had the opportunity to speak with a few individuals who shared their own ideas and opinions with me, and it also made me realize a new thing. I think we should turn to members of our own community to ask about these ideas and ask about these issues and these problems that we might not know so much about. So, thank you.
Any comments by any of the members? Here none, you can use the one last gavel. Let's take a picture with all the, all the compliments. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Motion to accept place on file by Counselor Mosey, second by Counselor Scott. All favors I pose, and all the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to Section 3, City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to take Motion 4.1D out of order. I know we have some registered speakers for that and anything else we have registered speakers for as well. Thank you.
Motion by Counsel Janas to take Item 4D out of order, second by Counselor Mosey. Section 4.1D is a motion response regarding winter shelter protocol. Mr. Richardson, speak on this one, Mr. Clerk.
Robert Whalen. Good evening, my name's Robert Whalen. I am one of the unhoused that have been living in Lowell for eight years now. So there's a few things. I have been, I've been one of the kids that have been homeless more time, more of my life than I have lived in a house, so I'm more comfortable living outside. Due to the protocol, it's not detrimental to a lot of people's stability or recovery that they're in right now because of all the open uses of drugs and alcohol and other unsavory things that are going on, on, on the street over there. So for me, my problem is right now is the injustice and wrong that is happening to the, the tent communities. I live behind the dog park on First Street. I don't know if you guys ever go by St. Memorial, so the ramp right there, I live behind the dog park. Last week, they gave us five days to acquit to leave there, so I'm supposed to be leaving tomorrow, but now they're saying Saturday. So the problem is, is that we had no formal notice of to leave or to basically vacate any land over there, but the land has been abandoned and not maintained by anybody, city or GPW. When I first got there, it was all torn-down tents and basically rubbish. I cleaned it up with the local river, river cleanup crew, right? That's it? Yeah, Lowell Litup Crew. I, I got actually thanked for doing it. I've been there for eight years, I've been maintaining the property. Now they're telling me I have to leave in the middle of Christmas. Like, what do we, what do we do here? I can't go to the shelter, I'm banned from the shelter because of the actual, like, all the alcohol and people that were got, um, vigilantly out, out of hand, and so I'm not allowed there anymore. I've been working, I've utilized all the, all the aspects that we have here. I've gone to CTI, I went to RCA, I've gone on multiple different places. Now it's like, okay, you're trying to tell me I have to leave my house, where do I go? That's all I have to say, and I don't know what else to say about that.
Thank you for being here. While discussing it, thank you.
Ian Isler Kabaj.
Hi, I'm Ian Isler Kabaj. How are you this evening? I'm, I'm here because I want to back him up. I'm also in a homeless encampment here in town, and, and I would have moved back for them if I'm not, it wasn't as disabled as I am at the moment. I'm waiting on knee replacement surgery, but some of the shelters are full, sometimes there's bedbugs in the shelter. There's a lot of different reasons why people don't want to go in the shelters. I personally have a lot of chronic health issues, it can get me really sick. One of the shelters has stairs, I, I can't do stairs right now. I just don't think it's fair. You guys have some beautiful decorations here, it's Christmas time, this is not the time to kick somebody out. It's just, that's heartless and grinchy. Can you please just work with them and find a place or something better solution than this? It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other, which is speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Janas, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the administration for this report and apologize because what came back wasn't entirely what I was looking for, but I think that's a me problem. I'm still learning all the terminology here. I was unaware that winter protocol specifically applied to a declared emergency or anything. I thought it was for the whole year. So I guess I still have some open questions in my mind about, you know, kind of where we're at as a community in terms of the unhoused population, how, how our numbers look now compared to a year ago, two years ago, five years ago. Are the efforts we're making actually working and helping the situation? You know, what, what else do we really need to do to, to help these folks and really get these issues addressed? Additionally, I was reading through this, and it sounds like the, the only two programs that are mentioned are the Transitional Center and the Elliot Day Program. Are there, I, I have to assume there are other organizations in the city that work with the unhoused population, particularly during the winter, to, to keep them safe, keep them warm. So I'm just a little curious what other community partners are involved and, you know, what we've been doing in order to really coordinate this stuff. I know that the homelessness coordinator is fairly new to the city and is still getting up and running, and I'm just trying to understand where we are and where we're going and what kind of, what kind of change we've been able to affect at this point and what are the next steps in this process. So, thank you. I also want to thank the speakers for coming out and speaking tonight. I, I really appreciate having them come in and share their perspective with us. It's a perspective that I feel is often lost in these discussions, and so it's, it's really great to have them come in and share what they're facing and what their situation is. And I think that, you know, keeping those lines of communication open is very important so we really learn, learn what we can do to help all the residents of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. To answer the question in regards to the number of beds, over at LTLC, there's 110 winter protocol beds that are available. There's also 50 hotel rooms, and the council's going to be invited over to Westford Street to view what LT, LTLC has been doing with some individual shelters. There, there are going to be a number of beds over there as well as on Andover Street, totaling 30. So we're looking at 190 beds or 190 opportunities for folks. CTI also currently right now has 100 hotel rooms, possibly with getting 15 more. We have been talking to CTI, we've talked to LTLC, we had a meeting with LCC last week as well. There's been a lot of communications back and forth, and what our real main goal here is for, for folks is the compassion to get a roof over people's heads, food, and safety and security. The council has talked about this on a number of occasions. I think this is something that is obviously extremely important. This is a, an issue that has plagued, obviously, the country. We're trying to look at this a little bit differently. As you, as you noted, we have a, a new homeless coordinator. So with, with our homeless coordinator and also with our director over in the Health and Human Services, they've really been running point on all of this to make sure that, quite frankly, it comes down to having the compassion to get people out of the cold, which I think is the number one goal of the city. I think that's been a goal of the, the council as well, to get folks the food that they need and the safety that they deserve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. My only last ask is that if we have a representative from the co-op team or something that can work with the, the two folks who are brave enough to come and speak with us tonight, just to help them understand what, what their next steps may be here and what we can do to help as a, as a city. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
In regards to, in regards for the co-op, it would be Louis Diaz from the Sheriff's Department.
Counsel Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarification, currently there's 190 available spots or beds?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. It's 190 just within what's LTLC, which is, as we all call the shelter. They have 110 on site over at Middlesex Street, the 50 hotel rooms, and then now Westwood Street, once again, council is, I'm going to ask all of yous to go take a look at Westwood Street. I believe it's, I may be misspeaking, I think, I think it's 18 beds over there. So there's, you know, 18 beds which would be available for people to, to utilize, as well as on Andover Street, there's going to be another 12. So LTLC, not to take anything away from anybody, anybody else, but LTLC has taken, I guess, taken this very, very serious to try to do some additional wraparound services. And I think in the city of Lowell, that's what we need. We need additional wraparound services where people do, once again, have a roof over their houses, food, and the safety. So, and I'm not going to take anything away from CTI, and LCC has been doing a fabulous job as well. So we're working at this. I've charged Ms. Ms. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Golden, to really start looking at this in a different way that we've all kind of discussed back and forth. What we have been doing was probably okay, but I think we can get better at this. I think this is our opportunity now to try to get better at this, where we have a community that we're, we're, we're trying to help. We've talked about getting back on that rung, getting back on that ladder to try and help people to better themselves and better, better our community.
So the opportunity is there currently right now, tomorrow morning?
Yes, that would be correct, counsel.
You all said Counsel Rook?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, go with Counsel Gishia.
So just to clarify what Major Golden said is, how many people have we reached out to, and do we have enough beds to, that are required to house the people that we've reached out to before we displace them?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. We wouldn't displace anybody. We wouldn't displace anybody without someplace for them to go.
Okay, and with that being said, at the same time as having a place for them to go, do we have services that can help them today and for the future at the same time as just displacing them?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. Yes, every council here voted in the affirmative on the ARPA monies that we put forth, and that's some of that money that we will be looking towards the first quarter and the second quarter of January. We've talked about co-op, we've talked about doubling co-op. Once again, the two folks that I just mentioned earlier, they are working on a plan. This is something, as everybody knows, is a work in progress, and it's a real work in progress. I've committed to all of you that I would work on this every week, and I have. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting today with some of the providers, some couldn't make it, and that's okay. We're going to continue working with everybody. Tomorrow is our standing meeting. We'll have another discussion tomorrow with senior leadership to find out where can we go? Who has the best ideas? What is happening, not just in the city of Lowell, but around the country?
So to be clear, is we do have a place for people to go, and we have services that are going to be provided to help them for the future, and the will of a lot of people is to try to help them through the winter. So I thank you for your efforts that are going forward, and hopefully this works out well.
Councilor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was under the impression that there was beds available on Appleton Street. I thought that, right next to Hafnes, I thought it was Life Connections. I don't know if there's any beds. I'm understanding that they were shut down. Can we figure out what the problem was, and maybe they need help to reestablish, to open? It's a wonderful place, from what I'm understanding, because Louis Diaz works with us and the co-op team, and they go and they know the different people around there. There's a trailer there that they offer showers and so many things for them to do. And so, there's help available. So if I hear that they had beds and now they're not able to have people stay there, I don't know how many people. I thought it was like six to eight, but that's six to eight people that's not on the street. Twenty? How many?
Thirty.
Oh, my goodness. And so why is this not available to be opened so that we could, you know, is there something we can do to help them? If it's a maintenance, could we not help somehow to keep it open? That's 30 people that would not be on the street freezing. When you stop and think of it, and you're in your nice warm bed at night, there's someone sleeping out in the cold. I don't know how they do it. I can't, I'm even cold in the house, never mind outside, so if we could do something to get them inside.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. The one issue there, council, has been a sprinkler system, a fire safety issue, which the, our commissioner of building as well as the fire department has discussed in the past. All of those folks, through the help of CTI and LTLC, they have, they will be placed. So we won't have anybody staying out in the cold, you know, under that situation.
Well, let's say they will be placed. They could be placed right there. Is there any way we could offer whatever their situation is at the place, we could help? There must be someone that would want to volunteer to fix the pipes or whatever.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, three to the council. Once there is a fire suppression system in there, then that would pass the building regulations. So that would happen. But the most important thing is that the folks who are residing there, I think there's a few more, but most have been placed, that what we're making sure is that everybody has a roof over their head with food and the security. And once that fire suppression system would be put into play, we don't want to put anybody at risk.
I understand that, but that's what ARPA funds is about, isn't it?
That's right.
So why can't we just use an emergency ARPA fund and try to help them to pay for that, to get it fixed?
That would be, I'm sorry.
So can we do that? Why don't we try to see if we could do that?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that. That would be a plan, but we can't have people staying there.
No, I understand that, but
When it's unsafe.
But I'd like a plan to know that in time, relatively soon, that'll be fixed and people will come back there. Thank you.
Councilor Gunesse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just had a quick question. ARPA funding has come up in the perspective as a way to address this, and I think that's a good idea. I would like to see us be able to work with them to have a safe place. I know that the folks there have put a lot of energy and a lot of heart into taking care of this community. So whatever we can do to help and make sure that that's a resource available for the community, I think is important. I wanted to ask about the ARPA funds. Have we actually spent any money in this area yet, or is it just still on the to-be-spent side of the ledger?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. That's on the to-be-spent side, which everyone should be hearing. I know that most of you have been meeting with Department of Planning and Development about different ideas and different thoughts, but the ARPA folks should be releasing, I mean, imminently, how to apply for these in the week.
Okay.
I don't say weeks coming, but in the week coming.
All right, now, we definitely need to get moving on this. As Council Mercy said, it's, you know, it's not the time of year to be putting people outside. So I'm glad that these folks have options and that we can work with the organization to get everyone safe and housed. The last thing I want to say is, the gentleman who spoke spoke of being banned from the shelter. This is something that I've heard from others as well. But my understanding is based on their funding agreements, they can't necessarily ban people for life. What are people's options if they are banned? And do we work with the shelter to try and understand why people are banned and what people need to do in order to be able to go back inside at the shelter? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. I don't want to speak on any particular, what I'm about to say doesn't reference, I don't know the two people that spoke, so I don't know what the situation is. But yes, I have talked to LTLC about that, and they have committed 100% that if anyone were banned, they would work through that and make that, get the appropriate housing available.
You also said, Councilor Gunesse? Councilor Rook?
So I know we're going to talk about ARPA, but I'll ask it again. As of right now, today, or tomorrow morning, there's options available for people that may be displaced? And I just want, I know I'm asking the same question six different ways, but, you know, we're talking about the future, but as of tomorrow morning, there's options available?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and three to the council. Yes, there are options available.
And in regards to the shelter, Mr. Mayor, you know, having some experience, you know, in my day job, you have to follow some rules as well. You know, agencies and people putting themselves out to help others, and I'm not talking about anybody in particular, but, you know, there are rules that need to be followed. And if you can't follow those, you know, they do go above and beyond and try to find somewhere else to go. But, you know, if people are looking out for others, you know, again, you can't steal, you can't assault, you can't do things like that. And I say anybody's been doing that, but those are some of the reasons why you wouldn't be allowed in the shelter. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the councilors? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I know these organizations are probably mostly privately run. LTC is privately run. Do we have any say? Do we even know? Are they properly staffed? I mean, that seems to be the question when I talk to different people around town. They say they may not want to go to this program or that program because they don't feel safe. So how do we try to influence that so that these, is there a way to influence these programs to make sure that they're properly staffed so people can feel safe?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. I think that every organization, whether it be a nonprofit or a government agency, we're having, everyone's having an issue with staffing up or staffing issues. So I wouldn't be able to really comment on that particular piece, counselor, but I know that the partners that we've been talking to have said they have, you know, available staffing and available beds.
Thank you.
Councilor Guesia?
I'd like to make a motion that we get a report every other week on this issue and who we displaced and how things are working out, because I think that putting this program together makes sense, but I think that we still have to follow through as a council to make sure that we're getting back something that we're saying we're doing. So I'd like to make a motion that we get a report every other week for the remaining of the winter, whatever, 16 weeks, just so that we can actually see where the program started and where we're going.
Motion by Councilor Guesia, second by Councilor Gunesse. On the favor of the House, I say no, the House has it. Motion is carried. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I appreciate the, all of you coming to the chamber to listen to this conversation. This session is a public meeting, but you would have to register to speak. But from the couple people that spoke, I would like, if there's no comments, no objections from the council, I would like to add this, in addition to Councilor Guesia's motion, if I could ask the city manager to reach out to the different organizations. We have great organizations from LTC to Lifelanes and CTI. I know they have representatives that do outreach work to different homeless camps on their own time and on their own schedule and try to help the homeless as much as possible. But if the city manager can reach out to those programs and have them, ask them to coordinate, to have a concerted effort on the same day or the same hours even, to go to different camps and speak to the individuals. So that way, each program, they have different services, they have different perspectives, they have different availability. So if you have like three or four representatives from four different organizations speaking to the homeless camps at the same time, I think they might be able to listen to the individual's experience, the individual problems, the individual challenges. And if one organization cannot have help, does not have service or resource, maybe the other organization might. So this much more be a concerted effort. And as you know, that winter is upon us, time is of the essence, and it is the will of the body, the will of the council, and it's a personal issue, it's a personal matter, as evident by the members of the homeless community who are here to listen and asking for our help. They are pleading for our help. They don't want to go through the winter. It's a big risk, it's a challenge, it could be life-threatening for some. So I think that the time is now, it's of urgency, and I think the best approach is to have different representatives as a group go out there to talk to the homeless camp. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to make sure, I understand what you're saying, and it's very, it means well, but in my dealings with CTI and different groups, they do know the people that are on the street, and they do know where they are when they sit with them and they talk to them and they offer them options. But it's a two-way street. If someone doesn't want to give up a tent for a room in a hotel, you know, I don't know where we go from there. But there is a lot of people working out there, there's a lot of people that know what's going on in the city, and I give them a lot of credit. So I just want to make sure that it is clear to anybody watching the meeting, we do have representatives out there. And I can call CTI and talk to my friend Meg over there, and she'll know all these people. She's met with them in the office. I'll ask them, can you find this person and meet them? And she does. And they do a great job, all these organizations. So things are happening. It's just, you know, sometimes they offer them a room and they don't want it, or they just don't want to follow certain rules, but we're trying to work on both ways. We don't want anybody out in the cold in a life-threatening situation. So, you know, we're trying, I think.
I don't disagree with you, Councilor Leahy. All I'm saying is to have, all the organizations are great, have great staff, great workers, but to have a organized concerted effort to go meet as a group so they might be able to share ideas right on the spot. Councilor Musia?
I just have one last comment, and I want to say I'm very surprised and grateful that everyone took the time to come here to defend themselves. This is amazing to see that they're here in large numbers to say, we need help, this is the situation. So thank you very much for taking time to come down here. I'm very impressed by their appearance here this evening. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, all of you, for coming to represent, advocate for yourself, and you can be sure that the council members are listening, the administration's listening, the city's listening. Thank you all. No other comments? We'll go back to
Mayor Chow, while we're still under suspension, can I take 9.3 out of order? We have a registered speaker.
Motion by Councilor Guesia to take 9.3 out of order by Council Robinson. Motion 9.3 is Councilor Guesia request city manager have the property department update the city council on the request for information to develop further behind the meters solar solutions across the city's portfolio. Second by Councilor Musia. Mr. Clerk, do we have a registered speaker?
Yes, Mr. Jay Mason.
I live at 415 Pawtucket Street, Unit Number One, and I'm here to speak on 9.3. And I just wanted to, if I could indulge you for just a moment, our children deserve a bright future. We're talking about the reporting back on the RFI for the solar installations, the motion that was put together in August. Our children deserve a bright future. They deserve a livable future, if I may. Clean energy is the key to reducing the effect of global warming and climate change. Solar is a critical tool in helping fight this problem. Lowell has a history of working and being friendly to the idea of clean energy and solar. In fact, we have the Amoresco Project, 47 municipal buildings were fitted with solar in that contract, saving the city $1.5 million annually in energy savings and energy costs. We have the Drum Hill Landfill that was constructed and now generates 1.4 megawatts of energy from a former landfill. These are great examples. The issue is that the last solar project was done in Lowell in 2014. That's eight years ago. We've got to do better. We've got to do more. There's projects in Ledlow, for example, right now, they're doing 35 acres of municipal solar. The Mass DOT is doing parcels within the state highway layout. So we've got to get creative, we've got to take advantage of the opportunities that we have now in front of us. And this motion, this RFI, has produced some responses, and we've got, you know, 20 or 30 different sites picked out on that motion that we can act on. Particularly, you know, the one that's closest and dearest to my heart is the Lowell High School. I'd love to see us set an example for the region and get solar on the high school gym. It's ready to go, it's mandated by the state to be solar-ready, we can do that. But we have to listen to the report, we have to get the subcommittee activated and engaged in moving forward with projects, and I'm here to support that action. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker? Councilor Guesia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I won't belabor the point. I think Mr. Mason said it best. We need to get moving because this has revenue, this could be revenue producers, and I just think that with everything on our plate, from ARPA to everything else, this may be pushed underneath the rug a little bit. And I'm hoping that we can get the high school, I think Council Robinson had brought up the Robinson School. I think there's some good sites that have been mentioned along the way, and it would be very interesting to see the RFI and what the plans are going forward to gain revenue. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with my colleague, I thank the speaker. I'd like to make a motion to send this to a joint finance and maybe technology subcommittee to get this RFI and hash this out and really try to get a solid game plan together to get a path forward.
Motion by Council Robinson to refer to the
Oh, I mean, excuse me. I definitely think it's a joint finance, but if any of my colleagues would recommend a different subcommittee for joint, I think this is something that's very important here.
Any member of the council want to, chair of some other subcommittee want to make a joint? Councilor Gunesse?
As the chair of the tech and utility subcommittee, I think it makes a lot of sense and be more than happy to join you at that meeting.
Motion by Council Robinson to refer to the joint finance and technology subcommittee, second by Councilor Gunesse. On the favor of the House, I say no, the House has it. Motion is carried. Councilor Musia?
I'm just understanding that someone's here to speak on my motion 9.5 animal control.
Okay, motion by Councilor Musia to take item 9.5 out of order, second by Council Yam. Motion nine point five is Councilor Mosier request city manager provide a full report on the status of animal control, i.e. the city veterinarian and procedures for injured animals, the number of staff employees in the animal control office and who is in charge, any partnerships with Lowell Humane Society, emergency hospital invoices, the outstanding status of protective gear and training vaccine, et cetera. Mr. Clerk, who is the registered speaker?
I don't have a registered speaker.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to allow-
To allow motion by Council Rock, second by Council Robinson. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Lambert, I'm with St. Anne's Episcopal Church, and looking to work with the animal control group because we're taking some difficulties with people who fail to recognize what's our property. They're feeding the, the birds, and they're feeding the squirrels, and it's causing an overpopulation, which, because of the overpopulation, the animals are going into our buildings, they're destroying the wires for our fire alarms. So I would appreciate it if once we get animal control structured, they could work with us. Because the public is not really recognizing our rights. They're throwing peanuts in over, we ask them not to, they start yelling at us, they swear at us. One of our employees even got spit at because we were, we were just saying, please don't feed the animals. It's just not right. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Councilor Mosier?
Yes, I didn't realize he was going to speak on that aspect because my motion is completely different than what Jeff is speaking about. This motion is asking for a full report on the status of animal control. A few weeks ago, I made a motion under suspension of the rules to ask for information on why injured animals cannot go to Wignall Animal Hospital. I think that you ask a question when you already know the answer. The answer to that is, I'm understanding that Wignall ended our contract due to billing issues and conflict working with the city. There's a few other things that I would want to ask, and I don't have anybody here that can answer these questions. What about Balja Animal Hospital and Westford Emergency Hospital? Does the city owe these hospitals as well? It is my understanding that they do. It is my understanding that we only have an emergency veterinarian to use, but he does not provide a general practice. The emergency veterinarian is more costly for the city, so why are we using someone like that? I don't, I thought we'd have someone that would be from the city that could look after injured animals. I don't know how widespread this is, that animals are getting hurt every single day or abandoned or whatever. I'm not animal control. I don't have anybody here to answer these questions. I'm not done with this motion yet, but I will wait for a response to come back, and I will use my notes to question who's ever in charge. I know animal control comes under the purview of the police department. Who's the police department? Who's, who's given the animal control officers guidance? Or who's in charge of animal control? It's almost like, let's say, the auditor's office. We have someone that answers the phone, but then they never give Kelly Oaks any information about it. So how's she supposed to know? I mean, I'm just using that for an example. Is, are the police cooperating with animal control? Do we have three people in animal control and only two are doing their job? And, you know, there's a lot going on here, and I want to get to the bottom of it, and I want to correct the situation. It's my understanding that animal control, someone in there was relatively new, and they had to go out and shoot a deer that was injured and, and needed to be shot because the animal was going to die. The person was never trained in that, didn't know where the gun was, didn't know where the ammunition was. What are we running here? Why do we have animal control and we don't have, you know, I don't even have the police department here. I don't have anybody here that's going to, I have a lot of questions, I want answers. I kind of know the answer, but I want, I'm not going to ask now. I want to ask someone that thinks they might know the answer. You know, I thought we liked pets. I thought animals were lifeblood. I mean, I don't want to see any animals hurt, but if there's any animals hurt in the city, I would want them to be taken care of. I would want the city to be paying a bill. I wouldn't want to have to go to three different hospitals, but nobody's going to take them because we don't pay our bill or something's going on, and there's a conflict. I don't understand that. So, I mean, I, I have, why do we even have animal control if we're not going to help animals that are injured or whatever? I went down the street the other day and a dog, I, I don't know if he jumped out the window or crossed the street, but he got, he, he died, and he was on the side of the road. I went down the street and cried my eyes out, and it wasn't even me that hit the dog. But, you know, let's have compassion for our four-legged friends. I mean, I have a ton of questions here, and I don't have anybody. Please get somebody here and put it back on the agenda so I can get to the bottom of what isn't happening that should be happening, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Councilor Mosier, you want to wait till the motions come back?
Yes.
I swear, you know, the police department is always available, but maybe wait when the-
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I, I want to thank Councilor Mosier for this motion. I think it's a timely motion. We just had an emergency water main break, and we were taking people out of their homes. From what I'm told, and I don't know this answer, is that no animal control officer was called to help out. And they weren't brought to the Lowell Humane Society. You know, they had to do it themselves, there was no communication back and forth, that the animal control was not on staff. And it could be wrong, but at the time, they were being taken out in the Humane Society. So if you can just put a report together saying, what is the emergency protocol? Also, to add to Councilor Mosier's motion, if, if it's okay with her, what is the emergency protocol when disasters happen? Do they get called? Do they take these animals out of there? Do they help out? Is there constant communication between the police department on the animal control side and the Humane Society? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go to Council Scott, and we'll come back to-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an excellent motion by my colleague. I, really just for us to know what the protocol is that we follow for animals, especially after hours. I personally have found three animals, two dogs and a cat. The first time, everything worked perfectly, called the police department, animal control called me back, it brought the dog to Wignall. That was a while ago. I thought the next time, the same procedure would follow. There was nobody that responded, it was after hours, and I called Wignall, and they told me that they no longer take animals from Lowell. So I ended up with the dog. And then the next time was a cat, and I ended up being told to bring it to Westford to have it, you know, brought to the Westford Animal Control Hospital. So if residents just know, I think they don't know what to do, who to contact, especially after hours, I think it would be good for us to, to make that clear. Thank you.
Councilor Mosier?
Yes, lastly, Councilor Gishia had something that I, I didn't say this time, but he said it very well. With respect for residents' pets, why was animal control not called to respond to the recent flood to work in partnership with the Lowell Humane Society? Not any time after the flood were they called to help out, and I want to know why. And I'm very embarrassed when I read the newspaper, it isn't me saying this, it's the newspaper, attempts to reach animal control, which is under the purview of the police department, to inquire about the status of pets left behind was not successful. I'm embarrassed by that. We get an animal control, they don't even respond when they're trying to be called? Who, who's answering the phone here? Whoever is in charge, they neglected their duties. I think this is a duty of this city, animal control, and yet the Humane Society, thank you for helping, at least they, they responded to the city for, to see if there's any response. There was none. I'm embarrassed by it. That's another one, so thank you so much.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. The only comment I wanted to make is because of what happened a couple of weeks ago with the, so I made a couple of inquiries myself, and again, Mr. Manager, we just have to check on the bill paying. That, that's the big thing. And it's almost embarrassing for the hospital to say they're not going to help because they didn't get paid. So I don't know how much money we owed them, but I thought they kind of had a duty to, to their profession, to help an animal that's injured, but that's another story for another day. But if we can make sure that our bills go out timely, sometimes they, they get tied up in law department over whatever the argument is, but we have to pay our bills a little bit more timely, and hopefully we can get an animal hospital that's closer to Lowell. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I used to represent, when I worked in the city, the animal control offices, and, I mean, the way it worked before was regardless of time, if, if a resident picked up the phone and called Lowell Police, they would alert the animal control officer in, in, I mean, that was twenty-four seven, round-the-clock service. And, and we had, I believe at the time, there was two hospitals, Wignall and we were utilizing, I believe, the Vet on Stedman, whatever the name that is, right, right near the Parks Department. And, and we had both of those. So again, I don't know what is going on now, but it sounds like, listening to my colleagues, that something's not operating the way it used to, so thank you.
Any other comments? Council Yem?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The water break at the Water View, it's residents that live in the Lowell Housing Authority, and I think to be fair to the city, Lowell Housing Authority should be also, you know, taking responsibility in help residents rescue the animal that belonged to their residents in the, in the tower. You know, it's not fair to just put all the blame on the city of Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments on the favors? Motion say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motions carried. Any other suspicion and rule? Council Robinson?
Are there any other registered speakers on any of the motions, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay, we now-
Thank you.
Go back on the agenda where we left off, and that was item three, City Clerk. Three point one, Minutes of Municipal Facilities, joined with Lowell School Committee Facilities, Subcommittee, December sixth, City Council Regular Meeting, December sixth, for acceptance motion to accept and place on file by Council Janess, second by Council Leahy, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motions carried. We now go to three point two. It's a vote to cancel council meeting of twelve twenty-seven twenty-two, waifu reading and second reading by title. And the city council vote to cancel council, to cancel council meeting of December twenty-seven twenty-two. Motion to adopt by Council Robinson, second by Council Drinkwater. This is, sounds like going to be a tough vote. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gishia?
No.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mosier?
That's a tough one. Yes.
Council Nune?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yeses.
We now go to four, communication from the city manager. Before we start with the motion response, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I thank the council for their indulgence. I just want to take the opportunity to introduce a new director of the senior center. Kim Gagnon, if everybody could, just Kim, if you want to give everyone a wave, or if you want to come up and just introduce yourself to everybody and give them a little background of what you've been doing, so on and so forth?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gagnon. I am the new director of the senior center. I have a, about a decade of experience in senior care. I was just on the assisted living side of things, but I also have a background and a degree in business administration, so very comfortable with all aspects of a business office, and I'm very excited to be here.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Gagnon, and the councils are here, and they're very interested in where we're going to bring the senior center for twenty-twenty-three. So thank you very much for joining our team. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We now will start with the motion response A about Middlesex Street Deli. Council Robinson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the chief and the city administration on this, but I think we need to do more. This has been an ongoing issue. Seems like with one in particular business down there, Lou's Deli, it's, it's, I know we're doing foot patrols, additional foot patrols, and, and the other half of the motion, the way I filed it, is due to a potential increase. I was down by there, and I saw on the wall of the old club, New U Fitness Center, potential shelter going in down there, a CTI project. I mean, if, if we're struggling currently to, to kind of shield our small businesses that are struggling down in that area, an additional sixty-plus rooms, a hundred feet down the road, is, is only going to kind of increase the problems that we're facing for the, the small businesses in that area. So any assistance would be greatly appreciated. I mean, I get it. We have a responsibility on both sides of this aisle. We have, we have a great responsibility to ensure that all our residents are provided opportunity and shelter. And on the same, same token, we have a serious responsibility to ensure that our small businesses aren't being targeted or vandalized as a result. So it is a delicate balancing act, but anything, I, I'm pleading with you, because I've spoken to these business owners down in that area, anything additional that we can do is greatly appreciated by these business owners, and, and I mentioned it before, maybe we look at something, I don't know if the state offers it, or, or anything similar to the cannabis business, a host community impact. I think with this type of social service that's being provided, is there some kind of host community impact that the state would be willing to partner with us on to help staff up additional foot patrols or whatever, whatever the impact is, whatever the communities need to do to also look out for the businesses on the other side of this aisle? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. Yes, counselor, there was discussion on the club, but as we know of right now, that is going to continue to move forward as market REIT rental. So there was concern there. I know that the superintendent has instructed not only himself, but also the, the sergeants and the patrolmen in there to actually stop in and talk to the folks from Lou's Deli, and I believe that has been happening on a fairly regular basis, and they're always invited to call him. I also know that the police department, under the superintendent's guidance, has moved the, the video, excuse me, the, the mobile video piece that we have, which is over there currently right now. So we are trying to make that a more hospitable area. I hear you loud and clear. You know, Middlesex Street has been a challenge for all of us, and we're just trying to, to find out. But, you know, in speaking with LTLC, we are, hopefully, once again, starting in the beginning of twenty-twenty-three, I do believe that we have a, more lines of communication are opened, much better. LTLC was just in the office today, and we're talking about some of these, some of these challenges that some of the clients happen. I, I do want to say Lou's Deli has, has been the target on a number of occasions by people who may or may not have been residents over at LTLC. So there is some challenges over there. We're hearing them loud and clear. The assistant city manager and I have been speaking with those folks as well, but I think the superintendent has, once again, he's directed patrol over in that area. The, the video is now currently up, up and running, I believe. Superintendent, Mr. Mayor, if we could let the superintendent-
Mr. Manager to the chief?
Mr. Mayor, manager, counselors. Yes, we moved the video surveillance system over in that area. There are, there is a little complaint. We talked to Councilor Janess with the, with the blue light or the strobe light on it, maybe disrupting some of the residents- some of the residents. So, we're going to look at maybe shutting that top strobe light off so that we can keep that system in the area and keep an additional eye on the business as well. You know, we talked to the owners down there and asked them to talk to the people that own the building that they rent from as well. There's some issues with the cameras and surveillance in that building as well, and they've had some problems with the landlord in terms of fixing the property, fixing the windows and other issues that they want Lou's Deli to fix on their own rather than having insurance to cover the renter when the business windows were broken. We did end up apprehending the gentleman that broke the windows down there. Again, as the manager stated, we're putting additional resources down there, and we hope to, when the new officers come on the street, maybe strengthen that group of walking officers on the early night shift as well. So, we understand, and we met with the manager and the Assistant City Manager, and it's a challenge for the city. We have recently created sort of a new task force with the Assistant City Manager. We met last week was just the first meeting. The police department, Lisa and her crew, the homeless coordinator, and as many city services as possible together, almost similar to a team effort to address some of the issues. So, we will be, you know, we just had our first meeting last week. Deputy LeBlanc, who is here, is involved in that, and we're going to continue to see what we can do as a city to put together the resources and try to help everyone out. Again, balancing the rights of all the unhoused individuals as well as taking into consideration the business owners in the city. So, it's a challenge, and we're looking at new means and discussing things as a group to try to address the problem.
Thank you, Chief. Real briefly, something that the chief just brought up, could the city consider, since we have the parking garage, would that be idea for a placement of a camera on the parking garage, a permanent camera?
They do, Counselor, they do have cameras at the parking garage currently.
Okay, facing that area?
I'm not sure exactly what the purview is, but we can look at that.
So, maybe that's an option. And then, something that was brought up by my colleagues earlier, when we're looking at Lowell Transitional Living Center and other social services in that area, it goes back to rules. Not to say that whatever happened at Lou's Deli was somebody that was a resident of any of these facilities, but with winter here, and if people are going to go out and vandalize small businesses in the area, and then LTLC is to implement rules or a penalty for that person doing that, where does it go from there? And I think that was asked earlier because we're going to end up with people back in here stating they're banned from something in the cold winter months. And I'd hate to see this struggle go back and forth for the next 16 weeks. I mean, I just hope that people are well aware, I don't know if that's something LTLC is willing to sit down and counsel these people before they allow entry, but we can't just turn a blind eye to people destroying other people's businesses because it's too cold to be kicked out of a temporary housing or shelter. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. I talked to LTLC, and they are, you know, obviously willing to help everybody and anybody. And they, I believe that they're in that process of doing that. Now, the gentleman, I believe, without talking about anyone specifically, but that person that created that was not a, though visiting the city, I guess, is the best way to say that, and for whatever reason felt the need to smash that window. So, I do know that the police department apprehended the person, and the courts stepped in from that perspective.
Then Councilor Rourke, your hands go up first. No more. We'll go to Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to the chief for this response. Thank you for moving the mobile camera unit down there. I think that is going to help, and I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're looking into trying to tame that blue strobe for the neighbors in the apartments right there. One thing I'd like to ask the administration to look into as part of these discussions and the things that Counselor Robinson brought forward is, is it possible as a condition of any permitting or zoning that we do for these larger shelter facilities to possibly include something that says, hey, you know, we need you to kick in some amount of money based on the size in order to support an additional detail in the area, something like that? I don't know. This has got to be something that other gateway cities in the Commonwealth have dealt with. So, maybe reaching out to the other gateway cities and saying, hey, do you guys have these issues? What are you guys doing? What can we figure out? I think there might be some things we can learn there and figure out how to move forward with this. But I appreciate the efforts of the police department on this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Man, three to the council. I know that the superintendent and the police department have applied for a municipal staffing grant, which I'm hoping that we'll be able to announce. We should be announcing something tonight for the fire department. You know, those are the other opportunities for us to put that in. But I understand what Counselor Robinson is saying and Counselor Janess, what you're backing up. We will start to ask some of the organizations as to what is the plan? Or maybe we can also talk to the delegation as a whole and talk about, you know, if the city is hosting or housing some of these organizations, how can we help our police force? Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just, I don't want to assume, but when we talk about Middlesex Street, we're talking about Jackson Street and Appleton Street also, right? As we know, Riverside Glass just sold. I spoke to the new owner. She's somewhat apprehensive about going into her own building. She's talking about putting a fence up. I mean, that's not going to look good. It doesn't help anything. But, you know, the business owners over there and the landlords and everybody, we've got to all come together. Are they, do you know if there, is there an association over there that they, that meets? Does anybody know that? Or not really? Jackson, Hamilton, Canal Group?
Jam, yeah.
Jam Plan? I don't, they used to meet?
Yeah, Michael Brede used to be involved.
All right. Because, you know, we've got to help out, and if we have beds available, we can't have people sleeping in doorways. They've got to get up and get into a situation, but, you know, that doesn't help. You know, you've got longstanding businesses that have been there for years and years, and, you know, it's not as bad as it used to be, but we can't let it get any worse. Thank you.
Councilor Yam, your hands up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That Midsex Street, Jackson Street, and Appleton Street, due to the problem with the Lowell LTLC, it's been a problem in that neighborhood for many years. And back in the 90s, I was the Director of the Cambodian American League. We had an office at 60 Middlesex Street. My job is to encourage businesses to move into the area, Middlesex Street. One of the businesses decided to move out, and I was able to find her a new home. And she's Counselor Rourke's hairdresser, so she found a new place in a better location. So, she was happy. The point that I'm trying to bring up is that that location, that area, is really tough, and it is really burdensome on the small businesses. So, my request is that, is there a way we can look at as a city, try to relocate the LTLC to better out of the area? You know, so I'm not sure what the administration have in mind, and hopefully, we'll find a location, a new location that is in the industrial areas that's away from businesses center. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe the minister can look into that as an option. And by the way, Councilor Rourke, your hair looks great. Councilor Gitchia?
At his age, he's lucky to still have it. I was looking at Sean Machado when I said that. I'm sorry. Through you to the chief. We talked about having police precinct in that area, whether it's Gorham Street, whether it's Middlesex Street, whether... We have the parking garage down there. Do we have any open space in that parking garage?
So, we have our police training center in the parking garage, Counselor, which is right next to the couple doors down from the registry right now.
Do we have, is it visible from Middlesex Street?
Yeah, it's right on the street. It does have signage in the window.
Do we occupy that routinely for 24 hours at different times, sporadic times, or is it just during training periods, and that's it?
Mostly during, no, it's mostly Monday through Friday. It's open every day, but during the daytime hours.
So, could we use that more frequently? I'm sorry. Through you to the manager. The manager has a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great question. We should probably invite the council there. The simulator is this classroom. It's, there might be an opportunity for one, there's not a lot of space, as much space as you would think there would be after we take out the simulation and the classroom. But it's a great idea to look at superintendent, if there's an ability to staff that and to use that as a...
We could definitely look at it. I mean, there isn't, like you said, Mr. Manager, there isn't a lot of space because...
I think I counted two front offices.
Training offices, there's the secretary's office, and then the academy offices are there as well because there's limited space. And we also, we have a precinct over Thorn dyke Street as well, which is right around the corner, and then Central Street in that area as well. But we can definitely look to see what type of space, I mean, if there is any room to have an office for people to staff it as a precinct or as a walk-in, you know, when officers can go in and write their reports and be there. But right now, the officers that work downtown usually work out of Central Street.
I'm just thinking that, you know, here's where the hotspot is right now, and is there a way that the walking beat when it's cold out could actually have a place to go in, light up, make sure people understand, oh, they are in the area? And, you know, you could frequently in and out like you do on Broadway Street or on Bridge Street, just, you know, for a spot that people can see it's active. There's a cruiser out front, and, you know, it's just there. I just think presence might make a difference. Thank you.
Definitely, we'll look into it as well and talk to our partners at the Sheriff's Department and maybe even do like we've done in other neighborhoods, you know, once a week, once every few, we're bringing in the Sheriff's Mobile Command Center and having walking officers working out of that Mobile Command post in the area for an additional presence.
Any other comments, questions by the councilors? And I thank you, chief, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
We now go to the next motion response. Motion B, Response, Catch Basin, Wachusett Street. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Just thank you very much. I spoke to a couple of the residents of Wachusett, and they're looking forward to the spring to see if we can get this repaired. Thank you.
No other comments? We'll now go to the next motion response C, 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline. Any comment, Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Lisa for the good report, and I'm hoping that the education will be widespread so our residents and people that need services can access it, access it quickly because it is a matter of life and death. My only question is that, is the hotline a multilingual? Ms. Golden?
Through the manager to Ms. Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, manager, council. I think it was only English and Spanish.
Okay.
I think those were the only languages it had when it was rolled out in June. I think they were trying to get more money to roll it out, but I'll keep an eye on it and see and then roll it out again if they roll it out into more languages.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to managers and Ms. Golden, do we have, the city have an opportunity to apply for any grant from the SAMSA in helping us promoting that 988?
No, it was just on the federal level so far. They haven't pushed it out anymore. It was just through the federal level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Excellent comment question. Counselor Yam, you and I also can talk to CMA?
Yes.
Okay. Administration will do that, Mr. Manager? Okay, we'll do that. Any other comments, questions? And while we're taking our motion response D, we now go through motion response E, Batoka Boulevard and Bedford Avenue. This joint motion by myself and Counselor Yam. Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Ms. Giovanni for the report I read, and I'm glad to hear that the city will take a look and then to study a way to have the lights turn green to make a left turn onto Bedford Avenue and the rest of this street. And a lot of family who live on Townsend, Shirley, Melrose, Lexington, Bedford Ave., particularly, I have family friend who live on Malden Ave. that inside. So, we have to go through, turn around to Townsend in order to get to Malden. So, maybe someone can answer. When do you think that the traffic light and engineer will be done?
Through Mr. Manager?
Through managers.
To Ms. Altman?
Hi, good evening. It's going to take a little bit because we need to do a study. It's one of those like domino things, like you want to change the light, you've got to change this, and then the next thing, and the next thing. So, it's going to take us a little bit to get an engineer to tell us exactly what we need to do as far as the timing and the phasing, and then get a contractor on board. So, I wouldn't expect it immediately in the spring, but probably hopefully later in the summer if we can get it, all the ducks in a row.
While we add that, you can probably look into a smart traffic light. That will be my motion 9.2. And I have a short video, two and a half minutes to show about the smart traffic light because then it'll alleviate and then make it all together at the same time while we're looking at it. The other question I have would be through you to Ms. May, through the manager, and the resident who lived on the Grand View apartment asked me why Bedford Ave. is closed because it's ended right there at the end of the property, Grand View Apartment. So, and I told the resident, I do not know, I'll ask.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Man, three to the council. That was made, that decision was made, I'm looking for some help here, quite some time ago.
Yeah, a while ago.
A decade? Does that sound about right? That decision was made about a decade ago in the sense that the, it's a city bridge, and the city decided not to spend the additional monies on it. And quite frankly, the folks at the Van Am Ave. side of Bedford were very happy with turning that into a dead end at that time. So...
Thank you for the history lesson. So, last question would be, that, since that we're not, it's not a through street, do you know when we're going to have a sign say it's not a through street? And I know the street sign say Bedford Ave. is on. I saw that. Thank you.
That I can request, after this evening, I can request LPD put out a sign. And then, it usually takes them a week or so.
Yes. Thank you. And I just want to pass it on through you, Mr. May, through the manager, that the reason I say that because I witnessed an ambulance came down from Rook Bridge, turned right onto Boulevard, and he make a left turn onto that Bedford, faced an out-of-town ambulance driver. So, he thought he cut through it to Van Am Ave. to Lowell General, but to turn around. So, when it's critical, it's an ambulance, you know, life and death, every second counts. So, I don't want the ambulance and the patient sue the city for not properly put the signs up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager.
I just want to thank the traffic, the transportation engineer and Ms. Giovanni by his rose report, promising report. Thank you. That complete the communication from City Manager of the motion responses. Now, need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Scott. On favors aye or say no? The ayes have it, motions carry. We now go to Section Five, vote from the City Manager. We'll start at 5.1. Vote accept expend $1 million Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. Waifu reading and second reading by title. And the City Council vote authorizing the City Manager to accept and expand a grant in the amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. and Environmental Affairs for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program for the Perron Farm Project. Any comments or question by any of the councilors? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council Mercier, second by Council Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yen?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Item 5.2, vote accept expand fiscal year 23 Municipal Staffing Grant, Law Fire Department, waifu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expand a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security regarding the fiscal year 2023 Municipal Staffing Award in the amount of $75,625 over a one-year period for use by the City of Lowell Fire Department. Any comment question by any of the councilors? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council Janess, second by Council Yen. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yen?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Council Yen?
Just a quick thanks to the Chief. Good job for receiving the grants, and I hope that the Law Fire Department will receive additional, more money, right, sir? While we on the roll. Thank you.
We now go to item 5.3, vote amend special legislation, waifu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and City Council vote amending in November 22, 2022, vote which approved the filing of special legislation relative to the Lowell Civic Stadium Commission and Edward A. LaLacy Park. Any comment or question by any of the councilors? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council, Council Drinkwater, you want to say something?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was just going to say briefly, I think that the change being made here is a really important one. I know the reason for it was somewhat inadvertent. I know in my line of work, my line of work oftentimes, when you're dealing with exemptions to the prevailing wage, it is not always done inadvertently, so I'm glad in this case it was. And just want to note that from the very beginning, when I had reached out to the City Manager, everyone was on board with, with making this change from the manager to the state legislative delegation, UMass, UMass Lowell, as well as this council with the, with the vote last week. And I know this is already moving, the amended legislation moving in the State House. So very seldom, when you're dealing with this sort of stuff, is it this smooth, and everyone's running in the same direction. So just appreciate in, in this case, that, that that was the case. So thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, and thanks to all who got this moving so quick.
There's a motion to adopt by Council Drinkwater, second by Council Mercier. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yen?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Item 5.2, vote accept expand fiscal year 23 Municipal Staffing Grant, Law Fire Department, waifu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expand a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security regarding the fiscal year 2023 Municipal Staffing Award in the amount of $75,625 over a one-year period for use by the City of Lowell Fire Department. Any comment question by any of the councilors? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council Janess, second by Council Yen. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yen?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
With the thirteen projects at eight schools, most recently for boilers and roofs. But I hope that kind of outlines the process. It's very regimented with the MSBA, and we have to follow exactly their process because they contribute such a large amount of funding. And so we can only go so far before we then have to stop and apply again. And then the Board of Directors at the MSBA, hopefully sometime next spring, will invite our application in and will vote to approve our application for funding on the construction phase.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
The manager.
Counselor, the roof is over thirty years. I was getting my numbers between twenty and thirty, but twenty-five for boilers, thirty for roofs.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any counselors? Just need a motion to add the project funding before we refer to public hearing. Motion by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Robinson. Now need a motion to refer to public hearing on January third, two thousand and three, at two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. by Counselor Rook, second by Counselor Scott. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to section seven, reports of the subcommittee. We'll start with the first one is the municipal facilities, joint with school committee facilities, Subcommittee of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any report?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. So at the, it was a Subcommittee between city and school department, myself, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Getchier, also intended, Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Rook, Counselor Mercier, Counselor Noon, Counselor Janess popped his head, and basically everybody was there. Counselor, I mean, School Committee Jackie Doherty, Chair, Committee Person Del Rossi and Lay were there, Mr. Underwood, DPW Commissioner Paul Sincere, Ms. Turner from the School Department. So we, we touched base again, just trying to find out where we are with screens and windows. We're on track. We've been replacing and repairing broken windows that don't function properly and screens. School Department's been very generous with their time and money doing that. We also touched base on, so window repair screens. We touched base on the, where we are with the water refilling stations. School Department has purchased so many of them. Can't remember the exact number, but they have purchased them. They're just hitting a snafu, we're trying to get them installed, trying to get different contractors to come out, take a look at the procedure, what needs to be done with water lines, electricity, how to re-fit them into where, where they, where the bubblers used to exist. So there was some discussion on that, whether School Department or city should be doing it, but I think the most important thing is that we get them installed. So we need to just let the powers-to-be work it out, get the contractors there, and get them installed. The main discussion of the night was again on the HVAC, the heat. And again, what Counselor Getchier alluded to a few minutes ago is the, you know, city has been doing a great job getting the boilers going through the MSBA program, get the boilers, roofs replaced, but it is the control system that we have to concentrate on. Again, I was, well, let me stop by saying when we heard a report from Ms. Turner about the, how much money the School Department was contributing, now the story was that it's gonna be, be, I think it was three hundred thousand or so, they weren't sure if it was going to heating system or if it was going to the modules. So I find that very disheartening, very discouraging, because I, when I was mayor, we had a vote in October of the, of two thousand and twenty-one. School Committee committed fifteen million dollars of ESER funds to partner with the city to get heating and air conditioning up to snuff. And a lot of that money was gonna go to the control system. I've been doing this for close to twenty years now. It's the same argument, year after year, we've never fixed it. We have this one-time money to come in, work together, and get this done. Hopefully, the School Department will revote that. There was a vote after I left in this current term, I believe it was by Mr. Lay, to delay that money, to see where we are in partnering with the city. And it's gotten to the point where I think the commitment from the School Department isn't there anymore. So as an elected body, I think on both sides, we have to make a commitment, make it very clear to the manager, make it very clear to the superintendent, that we need to work together, use some of these one-time funds, and get the heating system up to snuff. So that was a big part of the conversation. Right now, we have new manager, new department heads. Mr. St. Seer is very experienced in his private work that he did, working with the School Department, now he's head of DPW for the city. And I think this is a great opportunity to get this done. We can go on for another twenty years arguing about the heat doesn't work, this room's hot, that room's cold, you know? We have to put our, our efforts into resolving this, you know? This money can't go to raises, it can't go to, you know, other one-time things that in two years, we can't support anymore. It has to go, it's a small amount of money overall that has to get this problem solved. So the, it's a report of progress, we'll continue with this, but we're trying to get the, the heating situation under control. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the efforts of this Subcommittee. I know there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, I really hope that we can get this across the finish line with a partnership with the School Department. I think it's very important that we're rowing in the same direction here. And, Mr. Mayor, where you have kind of a foot in both pools here, I hope that you can take this information back to the School Committee and try to, try to shepherd this partnership along, because, you know, as Counselor Leahy said, we've been having this argument for decades at this point. The kids deserve better. We've learned through the pandemic just how important HVAC is. And, you know, it's important to, to develop a positive learning environment for the kids so they're comfortable and can focus, but it's also important for health and safety reasons. The air moving is gonna cut down on, on COVID infections, on the flu, on the cold, that really impacts the student's ability to learn. So for all these reasons, it's so important that we take advantage of the opportunity that ESER and ARPA are putting in front of us to make as much positive change as possible. And I think this is a, this is a big win that we can, we can, if we can get this across the finish line. So, Mr. Mayor, please, please do what you can with, with our colleagues on the School Committee to try and get this back in line and moving along. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I just have a quick question through you, to the manager or to the assistant manager. So these bottle filling stations, I think the number was like ninety-something or a hundred and ninety-something they purchased at one time, and I understand why, they were going through bottled waters they were purchasing. Now we have them sitting in a closet. There's plumbing and filters involved with the installation of these. So, I mean, at the very least, because this is another instance where we're gonna be left to maintain long-term. I think that's something that, if, if they wanna go out and secure vendor and foot the bill for installation charges on something that they purchased, by all means. But I still think our Commissioner, DPW, has to have some input and kind of oversee this project, because our people are gonna be left maintaining this plumbing and everything else that goes along with these long-term. And, and, I mean, it's just like with a landlord-tenant relationship, like we've mentioned before, the landlord doesn't just allow the tenant to have plumbers come in and install things without their approval at least, you know? Usually, it's, it's covered and guided and oversaw by the landlord, because at the end of the day, when that tenant moves out, it's the landlord's responsibility. So that's all I would ask. I think, I know that they're kind of prioritizing these water fillers, bottle fillers, all of a sudden, so I think if we are gonna get them installed, I think that's something the school needs to secure, fund, and, and I think our Commissioner needs to oversee that project. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you could just clarify on the water bubblers, is that something that the School Department has done in the past, maintaining the bubbles and replacing them? Because when I was on the School Committee, that was something that we did at that time. We replaced all the bubblers and did all the repairs. So I'm not sure, we, we subbed that out on our own?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the counsel. That purchase, I believe, was made prior to, to me being here, but my understanding is that the School Department went out and just purchased them. I'm not so sure with, you know, checking with DPW at that time. So I'm, I'm unaware of what the plan was once they purchased them and how to put them in, because I do believe, what Counselor Robinson has stated, I think it's in the hundreds. I think it's a high one hundred and ninety or so that they purchased.
Okay, yeah. I just know on the school side that we had a contract to have them all repaired, the bubblers, so I'm not sure, you know, how it became the city's.
I guess my, I apologize, counsel. My point, I don't know what the, what the idea was in regards to purchasing them and putting them in. I don't know what the thought process was, who was gonna put them in at that time, but I, I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. So at, at that time, back in the summertime, you were aware that these were purchased? Okay. And what, was there an effort to have lands and buildings do this work, or there was never an effort to do that?
Mr. Manager.
No, at that time, there, it hasn't been discussed with me as to, they, they were purchased prior to my arrival, and it wasn't clear to me as to who was supposed to put them in, and that, quite frankly, it's, it's happening now, the ask of putting them in, that hasn't been asked of me at this time.
So they purchased them and then told you after they were purchased?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the counsel. It was never, since it happened before me, I don't know if there was an agreement prior to.
My, my concern is that we do this out where I currently work, and the kids can put these things in. And the question is just, you know, if we have some tough ones, I understand they're hard to get in at some schools, they'll just be tough to do, but they're just basically a replacement unit for your bubbler that's there, or you can put it on top of it so you can use the same filtration system in case it overflows, you have somewhere for it to go. My concern is that if we had all of this, and whether ESER funds pay for it or ARPA funds, whatever way it gets paid for, it's pennies on the dollar, could we have offered the lands and building staff under those funds to work on a Saturday or Sunday to put some of these in, in these schools, and tried to actually manage through that? Whichever funding source it came from, whether it's ESER or ARPA or whoever, but I, I think that water bubbler stations were a part of the grant, we used them, so I would take it they were, and they were installed, so the, the labor to put them in can absolutely be written off, so. My concern is we're missing opportunities that we can actually have some health effects with, with the students rather than having, I don't even know if the bubbles are turned back on yet. Are they off or are they on? You know, with COVID running the way it is, why would you turn them back on? But that, that's my concern with the whole thing.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the counsel. This issue is really just coming to light because of the, the joint Subcommittee, so we'll get to the bottom of it and find out what the, what the original agreement was with, we'll purchase them, you know, somebody will purchase them, we'll put them in. I'm unaware of that at this time.
And, and that's really what I think the, the design of the facilities Subcommittee, the joint one, is, is try to get people talking, because I think if we were talking back in the summertime, this issue would have been gone long before now, because anytime I bring anything to Assistant City Manager Machado, boom, it seems to disappear quick and it's gone off the radar. So it gets done, and, and, you know, and that's kudos to you, Manager Golden, because you can go do something else, and, and that's what his job is, so, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Just to clarify, at the time, we seemed like we were spending a lot of money on bottled water. Kids weren't even in school yet, then the kids came back, we were spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on water, which, in my opinion, was a fiasco. So a motion was made to replace the water bubblers with water filling stations. And again, in cooperation with school and, and city side, we were gonna purchase them and have them get put in. As usual, things got complicated, now we're at the point where we have them, some of them are difficult to replace, some are, you know? The bottom line is, there was a motion made, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, I forgot about this, to request that the manager resolve and work with the proper department to get them installed. So again, it falls on you, but, you know, it shouldn't be complicated. We shouldn't be spending two hundred thousand dollars in water bottles when we can replace water filling stations so that they last for years and years. And again, a situation where it comes, you know, cooperation between school and city turns into a fiasco. We just need to get it straightened out. I think right now, we have the proper people in place that can handle this and get it done, so it, it, it's a shame it got to this point, but I have confidence right now that Mr. St. Clair can fix this up. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Mosia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. It has come to my attention at this Christmas fair today, before the council meeting started, that people were saying to me, speaking of water coolers and water stations, check out the bubblers around here, none of them are working. Is it, is it possible we could get them repaired or replaced? We're talking about people getting hydrated and filling their water bottles up, and yet there's, none of them are working. And the one on the second floor is so gross, gross. I just, you know, we gotta take care of the people at work here, keep them hydrated. Thank you.
No other, any other comments? Here we go, need a motion to adopt the report, as a report of progress and also to adopt the motion by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Robinson. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to the second report of the Cannabis Control Subcommittee, which met today, twelve thirteen twenty-two. Any report, Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, the Cannabis Control Subcommittee met on the topics of discussion on the process for awarding host community agreements here in the city, as well as holding a discussion on potential state pilot program for social consumption lounges. Attending the meeting from the Subcommittee was myself, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Leahy, also attending were Counselors Yem, Mercier, and Getchier, as well as from the Department of Planning and Development Assistant City Manager Giovanni Vias Rose, Francesco Sigliano, and Attorney McKenna from the Law Department. The, there were a few motions that were passed at, at the meeting earlier tonight, following a discussion that had happened earlier at the Subcommittee regarding the potential expansion of retail cannabis establishments within the city, which is currently capped, and the maximum number of host community agreements has been awarded. There was a discussion regarding the potential for both expanding upon the number of HCAs that are allowed for retail, as well as the potential for amending zoning to allow, potentially allow retail to occur in, in other areas. So it was motion made just to get a report back to the Subcommittee on both the process for doing so and potential options, when it would come to expanding zoning to allow establishments to locate in other areas of the city. That motion passed by the Subcommittee. A second motion was passed to get another report back to the Subcommittee regarding the process for awarding HCAs and essentially how different factors are weighted in, or preference for, for certain issues. Currently, the Subcommittee was updated that in awarding the current HCAs factors such as whether the business was a woman, minority, or veteran-owned were, were considered and weighted kind of according to a matrix. Motion was made to get a report back on whether other factors might be able to be taken into consideration as well. Some of those that were mentioned were residency, so being a resident of Lowell, certain business practices of the applicant, including, you know, the wages that they intend to pay to employees, whether they include healthcare as part of their employment package, as well as whether they intend to enter into potentially labor peace agreement, which would essentially just mean neutrality in terms of whether the employees of that business wanted to, to unionize or not. So a motion was passed to get a report back on what the process would be for the Council to both, you know, formalize some of those considerations that, that are currently used or potentially add new ones into the, the process for awarding future host community agreements. And a third motion was passed to get a report back to the Subcommittee on the state's process, should they decide to create one, on the potential licensing for social consumption lounges lounges under a state pilot program. There, there has been language included in legislation to essentially have the state create a pilot program for social consumption, but really hasn't, there hasn't been any progress towards the creation of that program yet. So just ask that as that comes about, that there continue to be updates to the, the Subcommittee on the process, if the city ever wanted to consider entering a pilot program for social consumption, what, what actions would need to be taken. So those were following discussions on each of those topics, those were the motions passed by the Subcommittee just to get reports back and continue meeting on those topics. So that's the, the report of progress on that meeting, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any counselor? Here we go, need a motion to accept the reports as reports of progress, as well as to adopt the motions by Counselor Getchier, second by Counselor Yem. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to section eight, the petitions. Eight point one, claim to property damage. Any common question by any counselor? Need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Rook, second by Counselor Janess. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to section nine, the city council motions. We'll start with nine point one. Counselor Robinson request city manager have proper department consider creating a two thousand and twenty-three calendar newsletter, providing updated information around recycling and waste reduction to be inserted into motor vehicle excise tax bill utilizing the fifty-six thousand grand we are receiving from the Baker Polito Administration, second by Counselor Scott. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. Good start. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We start with nine point two. Counselor Yem, request city manager have appropriate department explore the possible installation of a smart traffic light at the intersection of Attucket and School Street, as well as on Mammoth Road, Vonham Avenue, Riverside Street, after the O'Donnell Bridge to alleviate traffic congestion during rush hour, second by Counselor Leahy. Any comment, Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I started, I have a video showing how the smart traffic light, and this is a report. Before I show that, I just want to read the disclaimer that this is a video for informational purposes only, and in no way that it is endorsement of a products or services. The maker, the motion, has no financial interest or benefit from showing this video. I'd like to show the video, the LTC, please.
During the evening rush hour, traffic at this busy intersection in downtown Pittsburgh runs smoothly, with both drivers and pedestrians waiting not more than a minute or two. Instead of timing the lights on the basis of usual traffic patterns, video cameras and radars at each intersection monitor the traffic in real time.
From that information that we take in, the system builds a prediction of when every vehicle it sees through its detection is actually gonna arrive at the intersection. And then based on that prediction, we, we build what's called a timing plan, a plan for how the green's gonna get distributed to each, each approach in real time and begin executing that plan.
The system was created by a company called Surtrack, stemming from a project started at Carnegie Mellon University's Robotic Institute. From an original nine smart streetlights installed in two thousand and thirteen, this area of East Pittsburgh now has fifty interconnected intersections with another hundred and fifty planned during the next three years. Calculations show the travel time through the corridor improved by more than twenty-five percent.
Not because vehicles were moving faster, but they were stopping thirty percent fewer times, and when they were stopping, they were idling forty percent fewer on average. We didn't actually measure air quality by using a fuel consumption model, we sort of projected that we were reducing emissions by twenty percent.
Scientists say there is a lot of room for improvement. City buses, private cars, even cell phones may in the future be equipped with dedicated short-range communication, or DSRC devices, that will communicate with smart streetlights. They are already experimenting with something that may help handicapped pedestrians safely cross the streets.
It attaches to a smartphone, so you talk, it talks to the smartphone through Bluetooth, and then talk, it'll talk to the intersection through the DSRC.
Smart streetlights have also been installed in Atlanta, and other U.S. cities are on track to upgrade their streetlights. With self-driving cars already carrying customers throughout Pittsburgh, the city is rapidly becoming a hotbed of advanced traffic technology. George Puttich, VOA News, Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comment, Counselor? Thank you. I just wanna make a note, Counselor, when you present a video, I think a motion speaks for itself, does not count.
But I have to put a disclaimer, so I, just everybody know that, for informational purposes.
No other comments? On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion nine point three. We now go to motion nine point four. A motion by Counselor Mosia request city manager have proper department install a sturdy fence around the Elliot School on Favor Street to stop intruders and others from destroying property or declare the property surplus and sell it to an entity that can take care of it, as well as put it on the tax roll, second by Counselor. I'm sorry, Counselor? Second by Counselor Leahy. Speak for.
Well, I had a video for this, but I think, I think it speaks for itself. They're cutting the fence, we need a stronger fence, and if it's surplus, is there anything we could do to put it on the tax roll?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the counsel. Obviously, I don't wanna answer this just yet, Counselor, but we did surplus at once, there was only one bidder, but unfortunately, the cost to, to rehab it was too, too much. We are looking at other opportunities, I need to talk to the.
They're destroying, they're destroying the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All the favors, I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion nine point five and motion nine point six is, is the last motions by myself. If there's no objection, I will read the motion from up here. Request city manager provide city council on plans for the city to meet Massachusetts' reduce greenhouse gas emission goals of fifty percent by two thousand and thirty, and net zero by two thousand and fifty, second by Counselor Noon. Any comments or, or question by any counselors? I, I have a video presentation as well, counselors, but we'll skip that for next meeting. On favor, the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. Before we, the last item on the agenda is the city council exec session, but before we take a vote on that, anyone has any announcement? Any announcement, Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make note for anyone watching that there's a finance Subcommittee on Thursday where the Parking Department will do a presentation of the state of the Parking Enterprise Fund. I've had many residents reaching out to me after the discussion in last week's council meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. Thank you.
Any other announcement by any counselors? I do have one announcement. I do have one announcement for myself and it's not... Mr. Manager, you have an announcement first? I'm gonna do that. Okay, so there are two announcements then. The first announcement is a fundraiser to assist Moody Street flood victims. That is on Thursday at Cobblestones, starting from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There'll be raffle baskets, appetizers and cash bar. And again, the fundraising supports the victims of the Moody Street flood, which affected over 200 individuals. And the second announcement that I have is I have my annual Sun Santa drive and drop. You can drop off toys or funds for the Salvation Army. Joining me on Saturday will be the Congresswoman Doytra Ham's office will be there to help me and the toys will be donated to CMA, CBA and the Roberto Clemente Baseball League. And the funds will go to Salvation Army and will highlight the victims of the flood as well, as well to help families and children around the Lower, the Greater Lower region to help them have a great holiday season as well. So that'll be Saturday at the Boys and Girls Club parking lot from 12 to 2:00 p.m. Thank you so much for allowing me to make that announcement. So we are gonna go to the executive session and there's no other items after the executive session. So we will adjourn from the executive session. We will not return to the chamber. We will adjourn from the executive session in the other room. So I'm gonna read the purpose of the session, then we'll take a vote. Ten point one, executive session, to discuss a memorandum of understanding between the city and union personnel, public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Any comments or question on that? So I need a motion to go into executive session by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janes?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Mill?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Again, we will take recess from this chamber, go into executive session and we will adjourn from there. We will not return to the chamber. Thank you and have a great night.